Hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us on the news briefing today. Sorry for our short delay, a few technical problems here, but we are ready to get underway. And we are very pleased to start off the news briefing today with Dr. Danine Gus, Monterey County Superintendent of Schools. It is back to school time, and if you thought this year would not be another challenging year for parents because the pandemic seems to be subsiding, I think you're going to tell us, Dr. Gus, that it's not the case. And so we're very pleased to have you here to share some information for parents and then also to talk about a great program MCOE has to offer.
Great. Well, thank you so much for that beautiful introduction. I'm very excited to be starting the new school year. And I hope that all of you out there who have children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews are helping those kiddos get really excited about going out and doing their school clothes shopping and backpack shopping. And of course, I must start this presentation with an apology for the traffic that I'm sure you're seeing now out on the roads because many of our schools have already started. And of course, in the next two weeks, we have most of the schools in the county that will be starting back to school at that time. So I'm excited to be here today and give you a quick update. I'm going to really quickly share my screen. Let's see here. If I can get the right one, there we go. How's that? Are you all seeing?
Yes, we are. We see it in your version, though. It's not full screen.
Okay, let me see if I can get you full screen. There we go. How's that?
Perfect.
Great. Well, today I'm going to very quickly cover the 2223 school year with the updated COVID information that we are getting at this time. We're going to share some parent resources. We're going to talk a little bit about that exciting program that you mentioned, our Inside Education Program. Want to share with you some of the recruitment efforts and challenges. And of course, I want to share with everyone the master calendar for all schools here in Monterey County. So with that, let me jump right in. First of all, as Maya so graciously mentioned earlier, while we are very excited about the start of the new school year, we know that COVID is still here. It is still presenting challenges to all of us. And of course, we now are being very well aware of the whole monkeypox state of emergency that we are also in. But in regard to COVID, the focus remains the same, and that is to keep our schools open and to keep our schools safe. We do have new guidance that streamlines and clarifies the difference between what's required and what's recommended. I'm going to take a moment there just to say, I know typically we get a lot of questions about will masks be required in our schools? At this time, the CDPH guidance strongly recommends wearing masks indoors, but it is not a requirement. So at this time, we do have only one school that I am aware of here in Monterey County that will maintain their mask requirements, and that's the Learning for Life Charter School. California also affirms the authority of the local health departments and the local school districts in creating more restrictive guidance. So right now, while our county health officer that you're going to hear from very shortly will probably tell you that is not a requirement from our local health department at this time. Again, at any time, a school district could impose their own masking requirements or other requirements for health and safety reasons that they deem to be important. Let's see here. We will still be doing the weekly testing of all school employees who are unvaccinated. And schools will also be offering COVID testing to their students who might require that testing. We are going to be continuing our multi-layered approach to prevention. So that's testing, in some cases, masking. All of the schools have been upgrading their ventilation systems. We are offering vaccination clinics. And the biggest shift this year is really the shift to an emphasis on testing at home. So rather than trying to test our students at school, we will be providing, especially after long breaks, like the students coming back from summer vacation or when they go out for spring break, Christmas break, all of those times, we will be providing free at-home rapid antigen test kits with the idea that students will test at home. Any students who test positive, schools will be asking parents to report those positive results to the school. And of course, the County Office of Education will continue to provide those test kits to all of the schools. We're very fortunate in that the state is providing these test kits to us for free. And then, of course, we're getting them out to all public and private schools in our county. I already mentioned that there's not a current requirement for masking at schools, but of course, that could change at any time if there is a need. I talked a little bit about the rapid antigen tests already. For us, that's about 180,000 at-home test kits that we've been providing for staff and students. We also are providing free PPE, the personal protective equipment such as masks, facial, hand sanitizers, and the adult and pediatric masks as well. We talked a little bit about the multi-layered approach. And of course, not listed here, but hugely important is just a reminder to students to wash their hands regularly, not come to school when they're sick, and try to, at all times, just keep as much distance as possible between students. There is no requirement for a six-foot spacing, but you know, we are trying to really train students to be respectful of other people's space. If you have any questions regarding COVID or any questions about health and safety, we want to let you know that Nick Zafaratos is our Safe and Healthy Schools Coordinator, and he can answer any questions. I've given you his email address here, his phone number. At any time, we encourage parents, community members, just anyone in the general public, to give Nick a call. If he does not know the answer to your question, he will know who to reach out to to get your question answered. We also just wanted to share a little bit about parent resources. So we want you to know that there is support available for families who might be struggling with housing insecurity, food supplies, food and clothing, advocacy, transportation assistance, college and career support, tutoring, and much, much more. So families can always reach out to our Homeless Services Coordinator. That's Donna Smith, or our Foster Youth Services Coordinator. That's Justin Parker. And if they cannot help you, they will get you to the person who can help you. We also wanted to share with all of you, our Inside Education Program is starting up again this year. Our first session will be Friday, September 16. We're going to start early in the morning, about 7:30. We'll feed all of our guests breakfast. We will give you an overview of the topic area that will be covered that day. And then we're going to load you up on school buses and take you out to schools across the county. We're going to get these folks inside of classrooms so that you can get an up-close and personal look into the remarkable work that our educators and our administrators are doing in our classrooms. And of course, we're going to share with you our challenges as well. We're going to give you that opportunity to really learn what's happening and again, what some of our challenges are. So it's a unique opportunity to become better informed, better connected, better engaged in school communities. We were just really excited that we get this chance to really get folks into those classrooms so you can see firsthand what's truly happening and talk to educators and talk to students. So I invite all of you watching today to please sign up for our Inside Education Program. It's absolutely free. These are the dates and our topic areas. So we'll be looking deeply at special education, career technical education, universal pre-kindergarten STEAM, language and literacy, our multilingual programs offered throughout the county. And then we're going to wrap up the year with also talking about charter schools. Now, if there's any other area that is of interest to any of the participants, we can always add a date or take you on a very special tour just for those individuals that have an interest in another topic area that we might not be covering this year. In order to register for this program, and again, it's absolutely free. We do feed you breakfast, and we also feed you lunch. All you have to do is go to this website and register, or you can call this phone number, 755-0301, and ask for Teri Pimentel, and she'll get you registered. We also wanted to share with you our recruitment efforts. So this is probably one of our greatest challenges. I know every time I come before the media, I always do my very best to say, we need you. We need the best and the brightest. And the field of education is probably one of the most noble careers you could ever sign up for. But I need you to know, we are desperate. We need classroom teachers, we need bus drivers, transportation services, nutrition services workers, parent educators, you name it, we have openings. And also, most important, if you're not looking for a full-time position, but you might want to work, you know, some days when you want to work and other days you don't want to work, that's okay. You might want to consider being a substitute teacher or a substitute parent educator, nutrition services worker, or a bus driver. So I share with you our flyer here. Anyone who might be interested can just scan that barcode or that QR code there, and it will take you to EdJoin where all of the job opportunities can be found. I also wanted to share with you today our master school calendar of all the public schools and charter schools here in Monterey County. So when we share this presentation with you, this is a hyperlinked document. You just click that link, and it'll take you to those calendars. That way, if you're curious as to when the school in your area of the county might be starting or their vacation schedule, you have it right there handy. And if you get the link, but you forget, you know, where you may have saved it, don't worry, you can always go to the Monterey County Office of Education website and find the master school calendar there at all times. And with that, I'm going to open it up for questions. And I also, let me click the Stop Share. I also wanted to take a very quick minute to introduce all of you to our new communications officer. We have Kat Upman joining our team, so she's waving to you right now. If you ever would like to find out anything about what's happening in our schools, if you want a media interview or just information, please feel free to give Kat a call. She will put her contact information there in the chat. And Nick has already put his contact information in the chat as well. So I think that covers our major topics. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gus, and hello, Kat. Welcome to the family. So we do have a question for you, Dr. Gus. Is there any data available now as far as how many school employees are not vaccinated? Or at least what percentage of school employees have received at least one dose?
I do not have that data for all of the schools in the county, but I can get that data for you. I can tell you here at the Monterey County Office of Education, we have about 600, sorry, about 650 employees. And I believe, Nick, you helped me out here, but I think we have about 80 to 85 who are still not vaccinated, and they are participating in the weekly required COVID testing.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And another question for you, Dr. Gus. How is the Office of Education preparing for any possible monkeypox cases within school communities?
Oh, that's a great question. So we just sent some information out today to all of the school districts and to the community to just guide them as to where they can find more information about monkeypox, what the symptoms are. We also are encouraging any individuals that think they may have those symptoms or just want to know how to be more vigilant so that they do not get monkeypox, if they want to get vaccinated. The information that we sent out today guides them to where they can get that information. And I want to give Nick an opportunity here too. Nick, is there any additional information you'd like to share about monkeypox?
Yeah, the only additional thing I'd like to share is that it's a very different virus than COVID-19, and it does spread differently as well, and is overall less transmissible from what we're seeing from the state Public Health Department as well as the CDC. So keeping that in mind, I know it can be a little bit alarming to have a second state of emergency announced when we're still within our first state of emergency due to COVID-19. And I'll also be putting a link in the chat with California Department of Public Health Information on monkeypox in case you have any more specific questions. Hopefully, you can find an answer there.
And for those watching us streaming, we'll be putting those links in the text around the briefing later on so people can find that information. Any other questions for Dr. Gus before we let her go on to her next? I know you've got something next, so.
Right, I'm running to the welcome back for the Salina City School District over there at Sherwood Hall today.
Well, there's no more questions for you, so you're now free to go.
Okay, well, thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you.
Oh, a pleasure to be here. And everyone, again, thank you for all of your support of schools. This is going to be a great school year. You know, COVID's got nothing on us. Schools can do whatever it takes to make sure that we provide that high-quality education to the students and families we serve. So again, know that the county office is here to serve in any way. Feel free to reach out for any information you might need. Have a great rest of the day.
Bye, Dr. Gus. Bye, Kat and Zach.
Thanks.
And now we're going to go ahead and move on to our COVID-19 information. We have Dr. Moreno with us. Good afternoon, Dr. Moreno. Thanks for letting Dr. Gus go first today.
Hi. Oh, good afternoon.
Do you have any information off the top, or are you ready for questions?
Yeah, I can take questions on COVID-19. Thanks.
All right, so if there are any questions for Dr. Moreno about COVID-19, go ahead and put them in the chat, and we'll give a second or two for those to happen. You know, oh, here we go. I had a question for you, but here's one come in. Dr. Moreno, which direction are COVID-19 case, test positivity, and hospitalizations in Monterey County trending right now?
Yeah, so I would say at this point, I still think our rates are relatively stable. There's no significant increase or decrease at this point, but they're still elevated, but they're stable.
Thank you. While we're waiting for another question, I know you were on the line while Dr. Gus was talking about, you know, educating parents. Is there guidance that you can, anything you can say to help support Dr. Gus in terms of encouraging parents to stay informed, to follow best practices as we bring children together again at school?
Yeah, same things that Dr. Gus mentioned. Visit this California Department of Public Health website for guidance for schools.
Thank you. Another question for you, Dr. Moreno. And I'll go ahead and ask it. With Governor Newsom declaring a state of emergency concerning monkeypox this week, is the Monterey County Health Department able to handle COVID-19 and monkeypox simultaneously?
Monterey County Health Department is accustomed to addressing more than one emergency or disaster at the same time. We'll continue to do our best to address not just COVID-19 pandemic, but any other emergencies or disasters that come up.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Moreno before we let him go for the day? All right, Dr. Moreno, here's another question. Do you expect an increase in COVID cases with the new school year? It seems like anytime schools are back in session, it provides a better idea of where we stand in terms of handling the virus.
Thanks, man. Yeah, I don't try to predict what's going to happen. We just, again, look at our experience in this pandemic and look at the current trends to guide us in any decisions or allocation of resources or efforts. So we'll continue to follow the data and move forward as we continue to try to slow down the transmission of COVID-19.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Moreno? Seeing none, we'll let you go for the day. And if any additional questions do, oh, hold on, hold on. One just came in. I got to give people more time to type. Why are the COVID-19 numbers staying relatively stable?
The data that's coming in from the state shows that the, more or less, the case rates and the positivity rates seem to be stable at this time or leveled off. And so as we, as the different, we've seen different variants. There's the peaks of the surges appear a little bit different. They have different characteristics because of the different variants. So I'd have to say that what we're seeing now is due to the Omicron variant, and it's so variants.
All right. Last call for questions for Dr. Moreno before we move on to our next topic. If any do come in, we'll forward them to you for response today. Thank you very much, Dr. Moreno.
Okay, bye.
And so we're very pleased that we had people wait with us to the very end to talk about this really important topic. We're going to be talking about food resources in Monterey County. And all of us are feeling the impacts of rising costs and inflation. But for families who may be on limited income or have other issues, the current situation is really creating some food insecurities for more families than you might expect in our community. They're trying to make ends meet. And there are food resources available, and we've got four people here who are able to talk about those resources, how to qualify and how to get assistance. So let me introduce them to you first. We have Melissa Kendrick, who's with the Food Bank of Monterey County. She is the Executive Director. We have Yaneth Finaigus, who's the Outreach Coordinator with the Department of Social Services Community Benefits Branch. We have Naomi Heprich, she's our WIC Director with the Health Program Coordinator, and Ulysses Cisnero Abrego with Catholic Charities. He is the CalFresh and Nutrition Education Coordinator. Thank you all for being here, and sorry if I did anything terrible to your names. Melissa, I'd like to start with you today. I'm hoping you can tell us how the Food Bank is navigating this time because not only are people coming to you for assistance, the Food Bank has to get the assistance for people to be able to give them something. How is the Food Bank doing?
Well, thank you for that, and thank you for all of the others that are here that are also doing the efforts to help one of the hungriest counties in California. Obviously, food and fuel and rent for our clients have gone through the roof, and that's difficult for them, which is why we are seeing more clients than we did pre-pandemic. And on the other side of the equation, obviously, is a food bank that covers 3,700 square miles and runs a fleet of trucks, refrigerated vehicles of 20. We're also being impacted by the food and fuel costs. We're spending anywhere from 20% to 80% more on all of the products that we need to source. That being said, I've got a phenomenal staff of 30. We are serving 160,000 individuals each month, or over 60,000 families. And we continue to support 135 nonprofits as well as having 100 direct distributions ourselves. I would encourage anyone that is looking for food, they can either go on our website at foodbankformonterracounty.org, or they can give us a call at 758-1523. We actually have live people answering the phone. I know that's an unusual thing these days. We also have several new programs that we are operating. We've recognized that in order to get to those clients that have the hardest-reached areas that we consider food deserts, we've started an extensive mobile program. We have a free food truck that goes throughout the county. We have a mobile produce truck, which is literally a produce market on wheels. We are buying and sourcing from local female first-generation farmers, which is phenomenal because it's building resiliency for them. And we have been, we're building our five-acre farm. Many of you may have seen that. You can get more information on the website. We've launched a diaper program. So we're supporting in this program right now 100 women, mothers, and we're providing groceries as well as diapers on a monthly basis. And we will do that for two years and longer at the end if it's necessary. Of course, you know, diapers have been increasing in cost as well. A lot of times, it's difficult for working parents to even go to work because they don't have the diapers. So we are seeing more working families in our lines, both parents working. That's a disturbing trend. We're seeing a lot of seniors that we haven't seen before. So I think the challenge is, as long as food, fuel, and rent continue to be affected by the inflationary elements, we expect our numbers to remain quadruple what they were before the pandemic. But we're here, we're doing it. We remained open throughout the pandemic. And as long as I'm here, nobody is going to go hungry in this county, along with, like, I just can't say enough for the dedicated staff of 30 that have been throughout this journey.
Thank you very much for, Melissa.
Anything, any question?
Yeah, and I was just going to say, thank you for running, especially running down the programs. And first of all, I want to say for anyone who may have questions for any of our speakers, go ahead and put them in chat as you think of it, and we'll take all the questions at the end. Melissa, I know there are a lot of people who may wonder, do I, you know, can I go to the Food Bank? Maybe I, you know, I'm working, but I just can't seem to buy enough food for my family. Should people be, feel that they can't go to the Food Bank because of their situation? Or they might make, they might be working and feel that they're not entitled?
Absolutely not. We do it with dignity. There is no shame in needing food because what we've recognized specifically in California and specifically in Monterey County, because of the high rent to begin with, and now everything else, the price of food, many that were able to make ends meet are simply not able to make ends meet. And so one thing we want to ensure coming out of COVID and certainly coming, you know, with the monkeypox, whatever is coming around here, we know that it is really important that we have a healthy population because that is the best way to ward off sickness. It also makes seniors productive. It makes children able to be educated. So there is absolutely, the best investment we can make is that we can ensure that everybody in this country has access to healthy food and a sufficient supply. No good comes of hungry people, and that's why it's very important. I always say we're one of the best investments we can make. Either we can feed people healthily for about $1,200 annually, or we can have them, you know, seeking expensive hospital care simply for illnesses that could be prevented through healthy eating and lifestyle. We consider ourselves probably the biggest medicine cabinet in the county for those that we serve who often can't afford healthcare. So if we feed people healthy, we know that allows parents and children and seniors to participate in the community stronger. And come on, we can do this. We've got this.
Thanks, Melissa. And if you would stay on the line, we're going to turn to Yaneth Finaigus, who's with our Department of Social Services Community Benefits Branch. Hi, Yaneth, tell us a little bit about, I know you work on with CalFresh, but tell us how people can access services and things that they might not be aware that are available to them.
Thank you, Maya. Yes, so CalFresh is one of the services that we offer here at the Community Benefits Branch. And so we offer five ways to apply for the program. So one of the ways to apply is either by applying online on www.benefitscal.com or also by accessing www.getcalfresh.org or by calling over the telephone. So we have a toll-free number, and that's So we have a toll-free number, and that's 1-877-410-8823. Or by faxing in an application at 831-784-5691. Or mailing an application to our Monterey County Department of Social Services at the 1488 Shillings Place in Salinas, 93901. Or by visiting one of our office locations or Dropbox locations. We have an office located in Salinas at the 1,000 South Main Street in Suite 216. Or in Seaside at the 1281 Broadway Avenue. And in King City at 116 Broadway Street. And so we do remain open. We are seeing people face-to-face. We know we continue to serve the community and currently, as of July, we actually currently have a total of 22,202 CalFresh cases here in Monterey County. So we are, you know, serving many families with this program. And the eligibility requirements are very simple. It's, you know, you just have to be a U.S. citizen or a legal permanent resident and fall within the income limits. So what we really encourage the community to do is to come on in and apply, submit that application, and give an eligibility worker an opportunity to review the information to determine if you are eligible for the program.
And Yaneth, there may be people who are perhaps on the edge of those eligibility requirements. Can people be referred to other resources if they come to you for help? Can you help them find the program that would fit their needs?
Yes, so we do continuously refer others out whenever, not only if they meet criteria for our programs, but we do also offer additional resources. You know, the Food Bank is one of them. We refer people out to 211 WIC as well. In fact, that's one of the informational notices that we include in our welcome packets when individuals apply for CalFresh. So we do include information on WIC, food stamp, the Food Bank, and just other ways to access food in the community.
Thank you, Yaneth. And stay on the line in case we have any questions for you. And you mentioned WIC. And so we're going to turn right over to Naomi Heprich with WIC. And thanks very much for being on here. And tell us a little bit about how WIC is supporting families right now.
Yeah, so we have been open through the whole COVID pandemic as well. We had to alter a little bit by doing phone appointments, but we've been serving over, probably, we have a caseload of over 15,000 per month. We probably serve about 5,000 to 6,000 families per month. So our criteria is for the women, for pregnant women, postpartum, breastfeeding women, and infants and children to the age of five. And we do have income eligibility requirements as well, but we have a new WIC website. So if anybody wants to go to monterewic.com, they can even apply online. We take some information, and then we'll give them a call to see if they're eligible over the phone, and then let them know what we would need for their appointment to complete the process. So we definitely see a lot of moms and infants every day. In the office, we have locations in Salinas and Solidad. We have two main sites that are open every day, and then King City. We have a satellite clinic out there, and then we also have a satellite clinic in Seaside where we serve families. During this time of the year, we also have the WIC Farmers Market Checks. Some of you may be familiar with senior farmers' market checks as well. So we are issuing some for the area agency on aging. So we have, our families and the seniors are eligible to receive one booklet per year to shop at the local farmers' markets. So different farmers' markets will take the checks. So seniors this year are receiving $50 per packet to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables at farmers' markets. And our WIC families are receiving $30 per family to use. At the markets, they're also eligible to use CalFresh. So if they have EBT, several of the farmers' markets take EBT, and some of them even offer Market Match. So for example, if a family goes in and wants to spend $10 of their EBT funding, they can then, if the market is part of Market Match, the market will give them an additional $10. So they'll have $20 to spend at the market and only spend 10. So those are some of the programs we are, have available. And then, of course, I work with Melissa, Yaneth, and Ulysses on all of our food resources. We're always partnering and working together to see how we can maximize participation and reach. We've definitely, like Melissa said, have had so many families that never needed aid before, but because rents are so high and just the housing in the area, and at times, people weren't working, and with food costs and transportation becoming so high, we've been seeing a lot of working families as well qualify for WIC.
Thank you, Naomi. And stay on the line because you did a nice segue to Ulysses. And we'd like to bring in Ulysses Sisneros, who's with Catholic Charities, to talk a little bit about what resources he is assisting people with. Hi, Ulysses.
Hello. Is it fine if I share a quick presentation?
Please, that'd be great.
Thank you. So like I mentioned before, I'm Ulysses Sisneros, and I'm here to represent Catholic Charities. And I oversee the CalFresh and Nutrition Program here at Catholic Charities. We have two main locations here in the Monterey County. We have Salinas, which is our most popular office, at 1705 Second Avenue out there in Salinas, behind, I believe it's St. Mary's Church. And then we also have our main office out here in Seaside, where all of our administrative support is, at 922 Hillby Avenue. And in this location, we also have, twice a week, the WIC program staff members come over, and this is where WIC services are, in Seaside. I know Naomi mentioned that they have a satellite office out here in Seaside, so it's here with our Catholic Charities office. So we've been partnered with them for almost a year now, close to a year, I believe. So that's been great. It's great seeing all the moms and infants come into our office and receive those services out here in Seaside rather than going over to Salinas. Just like Yaneth mentioned, we also do CalFresh, we do new enrollment, STAR-7s, recertifications. And currently, there's that PVT program that many families have been qualifying for. The last PVT2 program that rolled out, rolled out in November and December. And families were qualifying if their students were part of virtual learning. And now they're going to roll out a new source of money for PVT, which they are calling PVT 3.0. Well, there's going to be new qualification requirements, and our agency and our resource specialists are here to provide information to the population here in Monterey County, as well as support. A lot of people maybe confuse us to what PVT is and how they qualified if they never applied for it. So we're here to answer those questions. And then they need help opening cases, or they're missing PVT cards and stuff like that, we can go ahead and call the state for that support. So we're here to help with that PVT, and that will be going on until the end of June of next year. So we're happy to be here to help with that PVT information. And like I mentioned before, we also offer that WIC support here in our offices through Naomi's team here in Seaside. And same requirements for people who are trying to enroll CalFresh, like Yaneth mentioned. And they do need to be citizens or permanent residents here in the U.S. But if the parents aren't any of those things, they can go ahead and put the children under the application, and we would be able to qualify those children for CalFresh. Aside from the CalFresh food program, we also offer the CalFresh nutrition program. We provide nutrition education using Leah's Pantry's curriculum. We do this in schools, parishes, as well as residential sites. And during these nutrition education sessions, we offer recipe demonstrations. We try to promote healthy foods, cheap, healthy foods, cheap recipes that families can make at home so they don't, they aren't spending a lot of money on healthy alternatives. During some of these nutrition sessions, we offer Food Bank distribution. So we partner with the Food Bank, get some bags, and provide these distributions weekly when we have these nutrition sessions, as well as we sometimes provide Food Bank distributions in some of our partnered locations where the Food Bank isn't currently giving out Food Bank bags. And this was a lot, really popular during the pandemic. We were at multiple locations distributing food bags. And the Food Bank in Monterey County has been really great at providing those bags whenever we needed them. As well as the nutrition education, something that was, that has been really popular since the pandemic started and up until now is gardens, whether it be in schools or residential sites. And even some, we're trying to get into some parishes. This has been very popular. Right here, you can see a picture of one of the elementary schools out there in Greenfield where they wanted to start a garden, and we were there to support. And we're there to support throughout the year if they need new seeds, if they need new soil. And we really love doing this garden work because it allows people at residential sites or even at schools, the students, to grow their own food and have access to food, whether it be at their school, right, right there, whether most of the, most of the week, five days a week, or at their residential sites, mainly apartment complexes, where they can just, you know, walk a little bit out to the garden and pick their fresh produce. And like I mentioned, we do support with this throughout the year. Once we partner with the site, we constantly try to check up on them and see if they need new seeds, new soil, to make sure that they have the, they have a harvest at the end of the season that they can go ahead and eat. So that's something that's been really popular since the pandemic started. And it's, and it's fun work, the garden, the garden support we offer. If you're, want any, need to, if you need to reach us, whether it be for the CalFresh programs or even the WIC out here in Seaside, or you just want to learn more about the garden support we offer or the nutrition classes, you can talk, contact myself at this email or at this number. My number may be easy to memorize for some of y'all. It's 831-233-3303. And depending on what you need, I can refer you to one of our resource specialists for CalFresh, refer you to the WIC program, or we can find out something for gardens or nutrition sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ulysses. What a great idea with the garden support. When you first brought up that idea, did it tick off the way you thought that it would? Because, look, here, you're supporting gardens, the Food Bank is creating its own gardens, and everybody's getting, funneling people to funnel farmers' markets.
Yeah, it was a, it was a great, it received great interest, especially in residential sites where there was a lot of garden beds that weren't being used. There was not enough people or coordinators that were allowing outside agencies to come in. But once we were allowed to come in in person, it really popped off. People really enjoy gardening and seeing their work turn into something that they can use, and healthy recipes that we might even show in the garden outside or onsite, depending on the area. So yeah, it's really exciting for participants. They love the gardens, so it's really popular.
How many gardens now? Of course, I'm dying to know, how many gardens do you have going right now?
Currently, we have six. We did start this year as part of our work. But this upcoming year, we hopefully want to expand way more, especially since we're getting new staff. So we expect to have upwards of 20 to 30 sites that we can do gardens at.
Fantastic. And then I think the, all of our other speakers commented that they were seeing people that had never come for assistance before for their services. Are you, at Catholic Charities, seeing the same thing, new clients who have just kind of come to the end of their rope?
No, yeah, definitely. They come in looking for resources, whether it be the food resources or other resources that the agency provides. And a lot of them share what those, their situations, and we've heard a couple of times, many times, like, "Oh, I'm never one to ask for help, but I really need it right now." So yeah, same thing with the other programs. We have seen, we have seen that trend nowadays.
Thank you. Before we wrap up, is any last words from, from any of you? Anything, final words you'd like to share about?
Maya, I'd like to share, just, I have a CalFresh Healthy Living program as well. So Ulysses and I, in our county, we kind of work with different things. So I have staff that goes into schools and does nutrition education. But one thing I just wanted to share, since we're talking about resources, is we don't want to forget school meals. So there's, the children have access in our county to receiving school meals. And I work with a lot of food service directors that are using local foods. And some of them even get things from the Food Bank. I work with a lot of senior congregate meal sites where they get things from the Food Bank, and they're trying to incorporate more scratch cooking, offering healthy meals. And it looks like some bills are going up for passage. So they've been offering, you know, grab-and-go breakfasts, snacks after that kids can take home. Some of them do after school, but there's also school lunch. So just, and summer meals, even though summer's coming to an end because a lot of schools are going back. But just so families don't forget those resources as well that are available for their children that are school-aged.
And would they find those, would they check with their school to find out what is available to them?
Yeah, they can even go, like, on the MCOE website, they can go to the state. But, so there's a lot of different ways they can navigate to find. But yeah, I would go straight to the school and see if there's an applicant. There's a lot of times an application, but a lot of things have been changed over these last couple of years. Application processes have been simplified. So just encouraging schools to reach out to the front office, and they would connect them with who they need to be connected with. Yeah.
Great resources. Thank you all for being here to kind of, to let people know that resources are available, and it's okay to ask for help. There's, there's help for you, no questions asked.
Absolutely. And the last thing I'd like to say is, we are all working together, but nobody should go hungry in this county. So if anybody needs food, please contact the Food Bank. You know, that you can do that first and foremost, and then go and get the other resources that you can. But there's no registration, there's nothing like that. So just give us a call, look at our website. We are all over the county.
Thank you all for being here and talking about this very important topic. Thanks for joining us on the news briefing this week. Our next briefing is next week. We'll see you then. Bye, everyone.